Welcome seeing unfamiliar face here in the middle. I hope y'all aren't as nervous as I am.
You got it though.
At any rate, I'm going to open up the December 5th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm going to lead us by saying the prayer and I've asked Commissioner Hale to lead us in the pledge. Lord, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, asking you to lead us, these commissioners here and our constituents in a path that would be your will. I ask that you provide us with the knowledge that best suits our constituents. I ask you to keep us humble, keep us grounded, and do the best job that we can for the people of Swanee County. I ask that you watch over our first responders, continue to bless them and their families for the sacrifices they make to serve the public. I ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Before we get started, I wanted to make a comment, I guess if you will. Over the last couple of weeks, heard a lot of talk about, I think what I felt like was maybe a little bit of miscommunication on the public comment concerns on moving it to the front and kind of explain that process for me and I believe some of these other board members. One thought process for that was is on the civic organization, them giving them an announcement period in the front of the meeting. A lot of times, they sit here for two, two and a half hours to come up and say a one-minute, hey, we're having a cake auction this Saturday. So that's one plus to moving it to the front. Secondly, on the consent agenda items, yes, the public will have three minutes to speak on all the consent agenda items. I encourage the public to reach out to their commissioners from the time the agenda comes out until tonight to speak to their commissioner or a commissioner, any commissioner, about any of the items on the consent agenda about pulling it for discussion. If the commissioners so choose not to, then we'll move along with it on the consent. If the commissioner or staff chooses to pull it, we will have it for discussion, open to the public. Under the general business items, my interpretation, the way that we're going to do this is that under general business, yes, the public has always been invited to speak, ask questions, comments on any items under general business. That will continue to be the same. I see no reason to change that. Tonight, we have two items under general business. The public will be invited to speak under both of those items. That's my understanding of that. I spoke to many people, not many, but several in the public that thought that it was going to be something different. So maybe some of you thought that to be exactly as I just stated. Nonetheless, I wanted to make sure that everybody in the room understood it the way as I understood it. So I don't know if that was more clear or more cloudy, but that's how we're going to run it for now. Hopefully, it'll be productive and we can get through it. So with that being said, I think the first item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. So anybody from the public, Mr. Hancock wishing to speak?
Good evening. Beau Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. What I was going to speak on was just what you talked about. Took on my thunder.
Sorry.
I understand why you want to move it to public comments at the beginning. I think it's a good idea, but I think you need to include the proclamations and all of that so those folks don't have to sit out there. Just a suggestion. But where a lot of this came from, I think, was a miscommunication or misunderstanding. But John Coach in his little news thing he puts out weekly, I don't know if you read it or not, but I'd like to read that and that will, I think, clear up some of the problems or create more maybe. Members of the Swanee County Commission agreed to change its policy concerning the public comment period and in the future will hold them at the beginning of each meeting. Previously, the residents could speak on any topic at any point during the meeting. Residents could also speak on as many items as they desired and the county didn't strictly limit then its time limit to three minutes per person. There was also an agenda item listed as public comments towards the end of the meetings. However, in the future, public comment would now be held at the start of the meetings and all concerns with any matter on the agenda needed to be addressed then and within a strict three-minute time limit. The action taken by the board does not sit well with several members of the public who feel that their right to speak on any topic or ask questions when they come up, it is a means, excuse me, does not sit well with several members of the public who feel that their right to speak on any topic or ask questions when they come up is a means to shut the public out of the process and are hiding things. According to the county commission chairman at that time, Mr. White, the changes were undertaken to streamline the process and keep the meeting moving. I agree with streamlining, keeping the meeting moving. I don't have an issue with that. I went through this and I was, my concern was the part that you had to address the entire agenda at the beginning of the meeting. I don't think you, and you've clarified that that's not going to be the case. But one thing I would like y'all to do is by consent, y'all agree to those, that that's the way things are going to be. I don't think it takes a formal vote. I don't, that would have to defer to the attorney. But publicly, you consent or concede, agree, how's that? That's what the procedure is going to be from now on. I mean, I don't see anything that is going to be detrimental as long as the public still has some input.
Right.
Now, also, I passed out a letter or a copy of a letter to the editor that Mr. Snowden wrote and some commissioners didn't know about it or hadn't read it. But it's, it was, I don't agree with everything Mr. Snowden has to say, but he did make some good points and I just passed that out for information for you. But pretty much, the chairman has covered most of the points that I was going to bring up. And with that, I'll shut up unless y'all got questions for me. One thing I do want to caution you about, if the public is speaking at the beginning of the meeting gets to the point, if a citizen gets up and you're asking questions or inquiring about something, that y'all just don't sit there collectively and do nothing, no response or anything else. Do not give the impression you're ignoring the public as they do at other meetings. Columbia County and City of Live Oak. People go up there with concerns, complaints, questions, they get no answer. If you start doing that, I'll be up there every free time. I'm sorry, folks. That's just my feeling. I don't think y'all will do that. That's just a caution. Thank you.
Way home, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I don't believe I ever done that while I was sitting here as chairman, not answering somebody if they asked me a question.
No, y'all haven't. That's what I'm saying. Don't do that.
Don't plan on starting.
Okay. But they do, theirs is their, and you can see it on all their videos.
I understand.
And don't become like them. This is Swanee County and we're a heck of a lot better.
Amen.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock.
Thank you.
Stacy Griffiths, 1013 No Name Road in Branford. I just wanted to let everyone know the town of Branford has their Christmas festival this weekend, this Saturday. From 10 to 4 is the festival and then our parade starts, lineup starts at 5 and parade starts at 6.
It's supposed to rain?
God, I hope not.
Guess who Santa calls?
Negative.
Ms. Stacy, 5:00 PM lineup, 6:00 PM parade start?
Yes.
Okay.
At the football field. Lineup's at the football field.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Board, my name is Robert Ford, 8896-135th Loop, Live Oak, Florida. I just have a public announcement on behalf of the Heritage Park and Gardens Board. I have two announcements. On behalf of Julie Omer, our president, executive board and board members, I think I have one fellow board member out here, Jenny. So the announcement is that we have Christmas at Heritage Park is going to be this Saturday, which is going to conflict with the Branford event. It's going to be from 10 to 2. And this is our kind of marquee community event, you know? It's going to be, you know, we will have Santa going to be there for the young people. We're going to have games, train rides, horse rides, face paintings and all kinds of stuff. And the admission is free. We will have some vendors and food booths there, but the event itself will be free. So we announce and invite the community to come out. And yeah, and Jenny, she's charged them house tours, okay? And those house tours would be $2 each, right?
At $2 a person. Five dollars a family.
Five dollars a family. And it's a good chance too. A lot of people that pass by there and see that house, the old mansion there, never gone into it, may have had an event there, but never had a kind of tour of it to kind of get an idea of what it's about and the historical nature of that house. So please come out Saturday and support this event. And the next event I want to announce is on January the 18th at 5:30 PM. We will have a ribbon cutting and a chamber mixer and mingle event to commemorate the opening of the Don Hale Cultural Center out there. And this has been a project in the works for a long time, at least five, six, seven years. And it's coming to an end. It's going to be a nice event, which is one of the buildings out there. So like I said, the name is a cultural event, so that's what you could use for community meetings. I know the art guild and other committees will meet out there. So come out and see that. It is a fantastic addition to the park out there. Again, it's going to be January the 18th. I believe it's a Thursday at 5:30 and more information will be coming out on that.
Heritage Park.
Heritage Park, right. Heritage Park.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Okay.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Ford?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Steve Fontana, 21181, 144th Street, Live Oak. Just correct me if I misunderstood though. So for the process, the consent agenda, we can comment in that, in that time period for the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the reason being was we don't always get all the information and, you know, sometimes I know there's, there's actually two email lists. One gets the, one list gets the, the
Agenda.
This agenda and another one gets the packet. I'm in the process of trying to get the more detailed one so I don't have to bug you whenever I got a question, I had a question on something and can you help me out, Mr. Land? So I don't know, what is the process for getting on that second list and why are there two lists?
Ask.
As well, the one, there's a one email list that gets sent out with just the agenda and then there's another email list, which is a more detailed packet. That would answer a lot more questions than
You just have to ask to get on one or the other or both.
Okay. Mr. Fontana, I think it's my, it was my understanding when I first got elected, I had that same question because it also comes to us in two different emails from time to time. There, as you can tell, the regular agenda, there's a lot more recipients on that email. A lot of the folks just want to see the agenda items and if it pertains to them or their business or a property adjoining to them, they have interest, they will, they would call and ask for the actual packet or come to the meeting. If they did not, you know, that is a much larger file and I'm not a techno guru, but the file size is much larger, so reduce bandwidth stuff. There you go. Makes sense. There you go. All right. Thanks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, also, that both of those information is on the website.
All right. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fontana.
Moses Klepper, 14581, 100 Second Path, Live Oak. I didn't go hunting for this quote, but it come across in some of my readings and it reminded me of a time, I think it's pertinent to this situation we're in. Norman Vincent Peale, the author of Power of Positive Thinking, and he's quoted as saying, "The trouble with most of us is that we would rather be ruined by praise than saved by criticism." And I think probably everybody in this room at one time or another in our lives could admit that we've been subject to that. I, like Mr. Hancock, I just want to throw that out there. I, I'm a gentleman, I'm a strong supporter of open and transparent government and I hope you all remain so too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klepper. Mr. Hancock.
Wayne Erika, 1183 93rd Road, Live Oak. Thank you, Mr. Land. You shortened my speech by about four minutes. And I was starting out by, there've been two extremely disturbing events recently. Number one, a football team that goes 13 and 0, does not make the final four of the playoffs. What a shame, players do all they are supposed to do and people decide they're noteworthy. That one's actually for your attorney. On a more serious note, I was really going to talk about the new format, but thank you, Mr. Land, for explaining it to us. I think everyone was very confused and nervous that we were not going to be able to speak when we wished to. I always tell other cities and counties, and I go to a lot of different meetings, this is not the only one I come to, and I always say, go watch one of the videos from Swanee County or come to one of their meetings and see how interactive those people are with their constituents. And I think it's extremely important that you carry that on. If you don't, we lose a whole lot of transparency. And just a comment, looks like you got away with the three-minute thing. We're not going to do that anymore.
I forgot to do that. Not bad. 25 years and I do it.
Well, I get that. And other counties and cities do it and their meetings are useless for the public. They don't get any interaction. They don't get any, a lot of people come here because they just want some answers and you guys have always given that to them and I'd hope you continue that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. And I'll speak to that. I think that, I mean, I think that you're right, Ms. Hancock, and that's why I said that at the beginning of the meeting, there was a lot of communication on, and I don't think I changed anything. Well, I'm about to say, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I changed anything. I just clarified my understanding of it. There were some misunderstandings, there were some different understandings of that. So I don't think I per se changed anything. I think I just said it the way that I interpreted it. But I think that, that, I mean, I look, I look to my left and I look to my right and I see four or five generations deep of Swanee County, Swanee County guys. Now, that doesn't make us any, any better or worse people than someone that may have lived here for two years. But what I'm saying to that is I think that the five guys up here and the guys that have preceded us and the guys that will follow us, I hope that we'll always have the deepest concern for what's best for Swanee County. Will there be bumps in the road? 100% there always are. Transparency is obviously very important, that our people know what we're doing with their, with their money. We work for them, so that's important and we want to continue to try to maintain that, albeit there's sometimes, there's items where the board or staff can't share because if we share it with the public, it's going to hurt the public financially, a land purchase or something like that. So there, in the days, I mean, economic development, there are situations where we can't, so I'm glad that most of the members of the public understand there sometimes we can't talk. But day-to-day business, open book policy. I would always encourage folks to come up, as my predecessor did, ask questions in the general business, ask questions to us, you know, during the week, on the phone, come see us, whatever you need to do. I mean, I'd be happy to talk to anyone. I always return calls and text messages and I think that everybody up here does, so we'll continue to maintain that. So anyone else from the public willing to speak? Donnie, you're giggling. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just, and I heard everything you just said and Mr. Bo, just I think to answer your question, the way the chairman explained it tonight, I'm, that's the way I interpreted it. I know you was wanting a consensus of the board. I just wanted you to know my, that's the way I took it and I'm glad he did a good job explaining it and all that, so.
And that brings up a good point, Commissioner Hale. Do we, Mr. Hancock did ask for consensus. Is everyone okay leaving the public comments and concerns at the front of the meeting the way that it is now?
Didn't even want to change the
We can add, Mr. Administrator, can we add the proclamations to that as well toward the front so that in the event we have, going in the future, we have, you know, kids or children or Haven Hospices here or someone like that, that we're going to do a proclamation? Can we do that to the front? Because sometimes those have families and whatnot and
Sure.
No need for them to sit here for two hours to do a five-minute photograph and announcement.
Let me, we can change that. Historically, the chairman has taken the lead on how he'd like to proceed the meeting. It's really his call.
Well, my peers have asked me to move that to the front, so that's what we're going to do.
Perfect.
All right. Anything else? I don't think we need a motion, we just need a consensus. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. We're good. So can we move along to item number one, approval of amendments for the November 1st, 2023 regular board meeting and the November 27th, 2023 special meeting? Any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving along to the consent agenda, we have items 2 through 11. I didn't ask this before the meeting, but does anybody have anything you want to pull for discussion up here?
No, I'm going to talk Adam when I want to. I'm concerned about
So any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Same.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving along, constitutional officer items. Have any constitutional officers here tonight wishing to speak? Seen none. We'll move along to staff items.
Yeah.
Oh, gotta be a little quicker, chief.
Oh, staff.
Oh, staff. My bad. Staff items. Before, chief, come on up, but before you speak, I want to make, well, I have an announcement later, but first one I want to say is Keith Gentry is in the building. Today is his 50th birthday, I believe.
Can we sing happy birthday?
I would ask that.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Keith. Happy birthday to you.
I just wanted to give you a taste of what they give me when it was my birthday.
Don't expect that at 50.
You owe the Beatles money now.
Okay.
50 is a pretty big one.
50 is a big one.
Chairman, Commissioner, I've just got a couple of items for some information. First off, last weekend, we had Christmas on the square. Unfortunately, Saturday got washed out pretty bad with the rain, but Friday night, we probably had four or 500 kids go through our, our little firefighter challenge thing we did for, they seem to love that every year. The guys worked really hard to put that on for them and it was a big success. The event went off as a good success for Live Oak. Second thing, there was an agreement that came across, the chairman, to the chairman last, about a week ago, maybe two weeks ago now. The LEPC has asked, and this has been in the works for about a year now, but it finally got done for us to do an agreement with them to receive the decon trailer from Dixie County as part of our, because we're a part of the regional hazmat team. It's not anything you guys need to vote on or anything to do it. It's just want to let you know information-wise that we would be accepting that trailer as part of that team because they've, they've lost their number of hazmat techs that they need to be able to operate it. So, and the last thing is, the Florida Fire Services had a really hard time with recruitment and retention recently. We've done a study in the Chiefs Association that in the next five years, there's going to be close to 8,000 firefighters needed across the state and how we're going to fill those spots statewide, I have no idea. One of the things that was a big topic of conversation at the Chiefs Conference this year was coming up with a, different ideas to provide a better work-life balance. The younger generation has more emphasis on that and one of the things we're going to try to do to affect that is looking at changing our shift schedule. We're going to do a trial period in January. Instead of working our typical 24, 48 schedule, we're going to try a 48, 96. They'll come and work 48 hours and be off for four days. There's been a lot of studies on it with a lot of positive effects with reduced sick leave usage, reduced, which reduces mandatory overtime. It doesn't affect our payroll one bit. It's the same amount of days in a pay period, so it's no budget issue. And I've got, you know, about 90% of the department has voted that they want to do it and the other 10% that thinks they're against it are open-minded enough to try it. Every chief that I've talked to, that their department has gone to this, has seen positive effects on the, on the management side and also their firefighters love it once they do it. So just wanted to let you guys know that we're going to give that a, you know, shot in January and see if we can improve our, you know.
That's, that's, that's not administration, that's your
Just our shift guys, yeah. Administration will still be 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, like normal. Just, just our shift guys.
I figured, just wanted to play it for public.
But that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
No, sir.
I'm sorry, Chief, ma'am, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you're supposed to be
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. All conform. I ran, I was so discombobulated with having to wear this tie tonight that I ran off and left the documents at the house.
That's fine. That's okay. We'll take care of it.
That's the trailer he was referencing.
All right. Appreciate it. Y'all have a good night.
Chief.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Chief.
Eddie. So just to be clear too, you're talking about receiving that trailer and obviously we have the staff to do that, we will be assisting those counties?
Yeah, as we do now as part of the regional hazmat team, if there's a major incident that happens and they need help with our agreement through the LEPC that we've been a part of for years, we would respond to those counties if they have a problem, just like they
Would respond.
They would respond to us if we have it. This just, the decon portion of it is probably more of what will be, even though we're trained to the tech level, we don't, we don't have the equipment, all of the equipment that's needed. The LEPC does supply us with equipment, but we still rely on Gainesville, you know, and Tallahassee is the two major hazmat response if we have something major. But the decon portion of it, we have the personnel that are trained and this equipment will allow us to be able to assist in anything in the region if anything major happens.
Fair enough. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other staff? Well, while Mr. Norris is coming up here, I want to recognize Mr. Norris. And I'm going to have to read this because it's quite lengthy. It's not too bad, but Mr. Norris recently, was it graduated? Yep, graduated from the Advanced Economic Development Leadership Program, I believe it was in Kansas City. Correct, Mr. Norris?
That's where the final class was.
Final class was. The program was created through the combined efforts of the University of Southern Mississippi, Texas Christian University, the University of New Mexico, and Valdosta State University. It is designed specifically for senior-level economic developers who must make important decisions and provide unparalleled leadership as communities vie for new quality jobs and economic growth. AEDL relies on experienced faculty, industry practitioners, business leaders, and the county's foremost site consultants to present leading-edge strategies and techniques necessary to succeed in the evolving world of quality job creation. As a graduate of the program, Mr. Norris has now earned the designation of MEDP, which is a Master Economic Development Practitioner. Congratulations, Mr. Norris.
Thank you, sir.
Just wanted to recognize you for that and the commitment that you put forth to finishing that.
I appreciate it very much. It was a great experience. It was an honor to be selected to participate and met a lot of great people, as always. Formed a lot of relationships with people all over this country. There was 34 folks that were able to go through the program this year, so I appreciate you guys supporting me in that. It makes a difference, so. Anyway, a little bit of an update. Anyway, a little bit of an update, and this is really for me to give you guys some love for the community out here, because, you know, last week, obviously, we were at the Freedom Summit, and I'm really glad to announce that there was one reserved table in the whole entire event that had about 350 people at it, and that one reserved table was for Swanee County, and it was dead center, front row, and that's all because you guys showed up. We were the only county there with full participation, including the county administrator, Chris and myself, so thank you for that. I think we all learned a lot. Just for the folks out here, a few things, we started off, and y'all please forgive my throat, I've been fighting this thing for a couple of weeks, but we got to meet with Department of Commerce, obviously, for several hours. I think that proved very beneficial, as some of the agreements that we have been waiting on for months, we had a chance to ask where those agreements were, and in two days, I believe, they showed up. So, it is amazing how you can wait for six months and you look somebody in the eye and say, hey, we're all here, where's our paperwork? And it shows up two days later, so if nothing else, thank you for that, because now we can get busy on that wastewater plant. Right, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, sir.
All right, good deal. So, but yeah, we got, we got to talk to those folks, Dr. Jerry Parrish, obviously, chief economist, great job. We talked about spec buildings, we're going to need a few of them, getting some more property, obviously, you know how I am. Broadband, energy, solar, Grissom was there, talked about legislative priorities, a lot of stuff coming up this year, we got, you know, to take a look at on the state and federal level, but just, just lots of good stuff. It makes a difference, and I know y'all see that and y'all know that, but y'all, Mr. Scott, how many times have we here Swanee County come from the stage or the podium?
At least seven or eight, if not more, but that was pretty impressive to have those top leaders call Swanee County out.
So, it was, obviously Senator Simon being there, you guys got to meet with him as well as Rep. Abbott and others, but thank you for being there. It means a lot when we apply for these grants and ask for the appropriations, and they see us all there. Mr. Perkins, thank you for jumping up and hollering hallelujah in the middle of the meeting, and getting Senator Simon to...
To recognize us.
To recognize Swanee County back there, and we'll know what we want this time.
Yes.
Right?
Exactly.
So, but I just wanted to say, let the public know that these guys are doing great work, and it's important when they go out and they meet and shake hands, and actually, it's one thing to have a phone call with somebody, but when you sit down to dinner with that person and you get to form a relationship or bond with that person, those things are everlasting. So, I really appreciate you guys attending. I also wanted to give a quick shout-out, we had some local companies that sponsor this. Swanee Valley Electric was one of the sponsors there. Of course, lobbyist with Buchanan, he was a sponsor. Liberty, who we do work with, was a sponsor, but Mr. Bailey back here was one of our sponsors too, with the North Florida Professional Service, and he was one of our major sponsors, so he supports that event, which covers all the rural counties in the whole state of Florida. And also Busy Bee, Busy Bee is a participant in that event, so I want to thank our local guys for supporting rural economic development, too.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, just, yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, you're talking about Swanee Valley Electric, and again, Mike McWaters and his staff, and the comments he made on that stage, I mean, he doesn't shy away from his feelings of taking care of the rural community, which is our community, our constituents, the people we serve, and to me, I got to tell you, every time he does it, every time I hear him speak, it just gives me chills to know that we've got someone that's trying hard to provide service to folks in our area that would never have that opportunity.
You could physically see him start getting uncomfortable when the others start talking about, there was a session, and what we did in this session, and Mr. Bailey was there, right? We asked all of the providers for internet in the area, because we talked about all this last year, right? So, they all talk about all they're going to do. Well, this year, they had to talk about what they have done since this time last year. So, they had to say what they've done. So, we got a lot of general, general ideas, a general thoughts from some of the other...
Larger.
Larger players, that we're planning and we're working, but Mike stood up and said, we've put this many miles of fiber in this community, we've hooked up this many people, and we're going to hook every dang one of them up, you know? We're not going to say we might get there, so he, you could just see it building within him till he's just finally got to let it go.
Without beat assistance or any of that stuff he was saying.
Without any grant money or anything.
Nothing.
They're going to do it regardless.
They're going to do it regardless, so yeah, and he's, he's one of ours.
And he got a big round of applause from the Swanee County table.
He did bless their hearts, so.
And the other rural, rural counties.
They did, everyone.
You know, like on that panel, you know, in, in Mr. McWaters, he, I mean, he is a fearless leader for what he believes in, and some of the bigger, for the ones that weren't there in the public, so there were some larger, very large providers, there are nationwide providers there, and they were on the panel with some of the co-op guys. Tri-County Electric was on there, they're doing a similar thing at Swanee Valley, and...
I don't want to mention by name all of those people, but unless you tell me to.
No, some of the, some of the comments were, you know, we're working on the high-density clusters and getting fiber to those folks, and the co-ops were all like, we're getting all the folks. If you're a customer of ours, we're bringing fiber to you, we don't think it's a...
It didn't matter if you were the only one down that dirt road, they were going down the dirt road. The last, yeah, they were going to be there. Everyone that's a striker, they're going to...
You have to respect that type of commitment leadership from our local guys, so much appreciated.
Yep, yep, it was a big deal, and I don't think, when we first started down this road, I know when I first started on this journey five years ago, if you'd have told me in five years we'd be doing what we're doing right now, I'd have been like, I don't know if we can do that or not, but we kept meeting. Mr. Scott was on that, that original committee, and we met, and we met, and we kept trying and trying and trying, and then when the co-ops came into the picture, it is just amazing now that you go in there and you have all those co-ops at the table with all these big providers, and we have surpassed them. We're, we're running, I mean, it's going, I mean, there's, there's thousands of miles of this stuff being put up. I know all of you see it all over the community, so it's, it's a big deal.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, not being ugly to, and we won't mention names, but those larger providers, but not being ugly, but until that committee was formed, until those discussions started happening, and until those co-ops, and ours we're talking about, started leading the way, oh, now it's important, now we got to do this, now we got to do that, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just, I don't know, it's just, I'm proud of them, just proud.
We're very proud, and they are forging ahead, and I can't wait till next year when they give their update, because when they do that next year, all of Swanee County will be hooked up, and a lot of our other counties that'll join us, that they serve, will be hooked up as well, so that's going to be a real interesting event next year, so. But thank you guys so much for being there. Like I say, ain't nothing makes you prouder than when your whole team is standing up and got your back, so thank every one of you for being there.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Mr. Norris.
Yes, sir.
We sure do appreciate your efforts. You did a great job down there representing Swanee County as well, down at the Freedom Summit. Everybody in the whole summit, I think, knows Mr. Norris, knows all of them, too. And we just appreciate your, your efforts, and what this county, the work that you do for us. In this paper, mentioning that you were, that you were the best director for Swanee County.
You right, you made that up.
Sir?
Did you make that up?
No, it's in here.
Well, I appreciate that, but it's relationships, and as you guys know, we're continually building them, and when we go to that event, they, they know we're there, they know we're there, so we got targets on our back, so we got to keep the standard high, and I'm confident that we will.
It is funny, though, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, we got to move on, but it's funny because, and I don't even know who the gentleman was, but I was standing there talking to Chris, and he came up and spoke to her, and he says, well, I knew you'd be here, did you bring Jimmy?
Yep, well...
So, Chris, she's a vital part of the operation, too. She's a, she's the mother of us all, because she keeps us all straight.
Yep.
And especially you, Jimmy, keep you straight, so.
Well, I need all the help I can get, sir.
If I had one more picture down there, though, that's her.
One more what?
Picture.
Picture. Mr. Perkins, I, or Commissioner Perkins, I will agree with you. Jimmy knows everybody, so one thing about it, when you're walking around those conferences, you got to stop and talk to everybody you pass. Like, Jimmy, we're trying to go eat, stop talking, quit talking to everybody.
It might be that one person, though, that knows somebody, that might get that.
So, he talks to everybody.
Everybody.
But anyway, we'll, we'll move along. Thank you, Mr. Norris, appreciate you, and thank all you commissioners for taking time out of your personal lives and private businesses to attend that conference, I think it is going to pay off in dividends.
Yes, I do.
Moving along, I believe we're on commissioner items. Any commissioners have any items to discuss? See, see none, we'll move along to, ooh, ooh, Commissioner White, county attorney items.
We're not doing that.
County attorney items.
Yes, sir.
The moment we've all been waiting for.
Do you have any consensus?
No, there's no consensus.
It may be a consensus against you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to step down, I believe Commissioner White has a few words for the people of Swanee County, and I'd like to get a good video of it.
I don't think that's how it works, sir.
You got to show your face, buddy.
No, I don't want to.
You can't see the tie.
I declare FSU's...
Dominant?
Dominance and superiority for at least 12 months.
In what?
In sports.
What a good sport.
Lower it so they see the tie.
I know that was painful, Commissioner White, thank you for being a good sport and holding up your hand.
You're only as good as your word.
That's right. Mr. Morrison, any further items under your...
Yes, sir, none so satisfying. Just one thing to bring to the board's attention, I was served with a letter of intent to sue by Morgan &amp; Morgan regarding somebody's claim for, basically, they ran into, somebody put some tree waste on the side of the road, and the person couldn't keep their lane and ran into it, and apparently the county's, they're trying to say the county's responsible for that. I'm not terribly concerned about the liability, it's been referred to our liability carrier, this will be the last time we hear about it, but I didn't want somebody, I didn't want you guys hearing about it somewhere along the way and what's going on, so that's what's going on, I'm not concerned about it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Moving along to general business, item number 12, Greg Bailey, North Florida Professional Services Incorporated, and I believe he has Mrs. Tori Humphreys with him. Mr. Bailey, welcome.
Good evening. I need some M&Ms.
Adam, do you have any? I was going to purr you some if you need.
Well, I appreciate it. You're just waiting for the opportunity to throw everything at you.
I'll be brief, we've just got a few updates. On Southwest, on 80th, 139th, we've been working with a contractor on that, it's under construction, coordinating the, from the design side on, on that project. 76th Street, the DOT's provided authorization to advertise for that project, staff is looking to advertise that in January, there's a possibility DOT may come up with some additional funds for that, so that's the reason for the delay. So, everything's ready to go, but we're going to defer the advertisement till January on that. Express Street, pre-construction meeting was held today, so that'll be kicking off, contractor down there in Branford will be Kurtz Construction down there for that. The Greenway Trail will also be done by Kurtz Construction, but that one will be starting after the holidays, so it'll be starting in January on that particular project there. On 68th Terrace, what we call our Phase One, which is our, our survey, our design layout, our conceptual design, our right-of-way maps and all that, has been complete, we've delivered that to county staff as far as the right-of-way requirements for that and the initial Phase One set plans. The Potable Water Main Extension is out to bid, as I reported last time, those bids are due on Friday, December 15th, so we'll be getting those back here pretty quick. Today, we delivered the, there's five components to the master plan for the catalyst site, we delivered the, our draft to county staff today for the water side of that. We're working on the other four, which is the transportation, wastewater, um...
Gas.
Gas and stormwater. So, that's all I have as far as the project updates go. If y'all have any questions for us.
Any staff or commissioners have any questions for Mr. Bailey?
Just one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I won't hold you to it, but I mean, if we advertise 76th Street in first of the year, January, start date, because I'm getting asked all the time when...
If we advertise in January, I would probably say you'd be looking at...
April.
Yeah, early April, before we could start work. You'd have contracts late March, and then the contractor start in April.
Okay, thank you. Any, any members of the public got any questions for Mr. Bailey? All right, see none, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Tori.
Thank you both.
Move, move along to item number 13 on the agenda, which is the 2024 Annual Committee Appointments, Chairman Land. Guys, to be honest with you, like, I don't believe in changing that, what is it, it's, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The only one that needs to be changed will be the Tourist Development Council, because the Board of County Commissioners Chairman must serve, so Commissioner, Commissioner White, I will take your place on the TDC Board, if you're okay with that.
That's your call, bro.
If anybody else has any, I just feel like if we swap them around, you get your commissioner in there for a year, a year or so on a particular board, and kind of knows what's going on, and then we play musical chairs, well, it takes the new commissioner, whatever board it may be, some time to get up to speed, so I feel like we'd be more effective just kind of leaving it like it is, if y'all are okay with that.
I'm okay with it.
What about the, is it mandatory for the chairman to sit on that one as well?
Swanee River Economic Council? It doesn't say on my sheet that it is.
I think that...
Revolving appointment between member counties.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just saying if it's one of those deals where...
In the event that it does, then I will take that over as well, but for now, you're, you got the short straw.
Understood, man.
No, no disrespect on that particular board. So, if y'all are good with that, we got consensus, Mr. Scott, just to leave those except for the TDC. So, moving along to item number 14, additional agenda items. Anyone have any additional agenda items? See none. 15, administrators' comments and information. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a few things, we did get notified by Senator Simon's office on Friday, he's going to approach the governor's office on trying to get them to approve the DOT pickup of debris on public-private roads, public access private roads, and we're compiling the list, we've got like 340 private roads in the county, take that snapshot of that for a minute, so we got to go and put eyes on every road while the guys are busy, and we just had three inches of rain, so we'll be trying to get that knocked out as quick as we can, get that to the senator's office. I've already gave him a preliminary list, but moving forward with that, so we hope that they'll agree to let DOT's contractors go and clean, clean those private roads also. It's also non-gated private roads also, just for the record. We're into the second, or the final pass on debris pickup from DOT, so any debris that anybody has needs to be out the right-of-way as soon as you can, so it doesn't get missed. So far, up through the second, there's been 886,000 cubic yards of debris picked up already. That's just pickup, that's not the grinding and everything, I've done a lot of grinding, obviously, of the, you know, chipping that up, but that's a lot of product and would have been a lot of expense, I won't share the number, but it's more than we have in reserves, that would be sitting out if we had gone a different route. I think the war was wise to let DOT foot that bill, not us. On the 17th of January is Florida Association of Counties Legislative Days, please let me or Manny know if you want to attend that, it's a one-day event. Last year was combined with Rural Florida, Rural County Days, which is two different days for that, but it's, you know, update from, from FAC on bills, and usually we have speakers from different agencies come in and spoke, speak to us, but let us know if you'd like to attend that. The landfill, we had the air curtain, that DEP did an inspection, and wants to make some modifications on that. modifications on that. The air curtain is where we burn the debris when we pick up debris at the collection sites and other, take it to the landfill to burn it. We had Cog and Bubba go out and do the work on that, do some welding and such. DEV came back and inspected it, then we use that as a model they give to other people to do the same thing that we did. So, Cog wants to patent that, but, Tom, but you probably need to, I won't go there. Anyway, but they did a really good job, and I appreciate the work that those guys do. We'll be moving forward in the next, you know, several weeks, doing, looking at land clearing for some projects at the catalyst site, so anybody in the public or anybody that's got people who do that for a living, you know, they'll contact the office so we can get them on the list to get some quotes on different vendors that can do that for us, so it should be within, or the threshold, so we should be able to get quotes on those items, move forward with that. The LSC, Little State Emergency Meeting will be on Friday at 8:30 at the airport. Just put on the calendars if you would please. We hope to, once we get this, these private roads squared away with the state, we can, you know, stop having those, but we'll leave ourselves options for the time being.
Mr. Scott, sorry, for O'Leo here, is that 8:00 or 8:30?
It's 8:30.
8:30 there, Commissioner Mobley.
Right.
There's an inside joke there.
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM.
And just to follow up from Mr. Norris's comments about the Frida, which is the Florida Rural Economic Development Association, so many times we use acronyms, we don't know what those are, and very well attended by our folks, we appreciate that. But the thing I picked up from the head of Department of Commerce, which is also the staff who works for the governor also, he made a comment, Swanee County's got it going on, and I took a lot of pride in that and what our staff and what our commission's been doing, economic development projects, the staff we have writing the grants, administering the grants, following up on projects. It takes everybody across the board to make that stuff happen, but, you know, we did, Jimmy did have a conversation with him in a matter of hours, you know, we got a report back that we needed to have the, the young lady that contacted Shannon about the agreement for that wastewater plant said, I gotta get this today. So, impact was made, and, but I'm just proud of the progress we're making there and other things too. And that's all I've got, unless you've got any questions or has any questions for me.
You make any questions for Mr. Scott? See none, we'll move along. So, board members, we'll mix it up a little bit. We'll start down here with Commissioner Hale. I'm gonna let Mr. Perkins have the last laugh.
I had time to think for a minute.
I should have did that backwards, because you're an NOE fan. I should have let him do it again, so you could get the last laugh.
That's all right.
On light here.
That's right.
But go ahead, I've already started.
That's all right. I just, again, we had a great time down there, do appreciate everyone being there. I appreciate Jimmy and his leadership in that role. I appreciate all of our employees, guys, and I know there are certain ones, probably not all departments are tired of hearing from us, I'm sure, since the storm, but I mean, they always answer that phone, they always answer my calls, and I appreciate our community. I know at one time, everyone was getting a little antsy on some of this stuff, but once we got clarity from Mr. Scott, when we had talks with the state and these folks, that gave us some, you know, answers to give the folks, and that's important as well. So, I just appreciate it, appreciate it all, appreciate the board, and I know we're coming up on the season here. We got one more meeting, but just, I'll start reminding everybody, don't forget the reason for the season, folks.
Amen. Don't forget. Amen. Commissioner White?
Just want to throw it back out again, the Christmas in Branford, that's this weekend, right, Stacy? And just want to say thanks to the board for all showing up for the Frida Conference. That was, it's always a good time, and we all give each other a lot of grief when we're there, so there's a lot of picking and carrying on, so it's a good time and it's fun, and we get to see a lot of people, and it's really important. In Swanee County, I had another commissioner come up to me and ask me, well, how did you, how do y'all get all your board members there? I said, well, we just do it. He said, well, I can't even get one to come, so that coming from another county pretty much says a lot for what we do, and just proud of us, proud of the other commissioners, and we're, and I also want to say about the public comment thing, it was never my intention to hide anything from anybody. It was to speed up the meeting. I'm glad Commissioner Lann clarified that in the beginning of the meeting, but you will never hear me try to keep something from the public. I just, I won't do that unless it's something covered by an agreement that we can't talk about, but that was never my intention, and I'm sorry if you felt it was that way, but it was just to speed the meetings along, so with that, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Mr. Perkins?
Just thank for all of our administration and our department heads for all the do that they do and the work they're doing, and just to mention also that Pal Chilis, they won state championship. What was that at, Mr. Ford?
Daytona Beach.
Daytona Beach, they won state championship.
Congratulations.
So, proud of them, and also that kind of a sorrow, pray for the Fieldpot family. Mr. Fieldpot, you know, he was electrician and plumber. He passed, pray for his wife and his family, you know, they're going through a tough time right now. You know, he was a strong part of the family, so we just hard go out for that family. That's just baseball, man.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Mobley?
Pretty much said it all, but we appreciate the staff and everybody in the community for going out and I appreciate y'all.
All right, well, they pretty much said it all. Just remind everybody about the, also at Heritage Park, Law &amp; Gardens this weekend, 10 to 2, right? If I got it right, is their Christmas festival as well, so if you don't, ain't got a way to get to the south end, there's something on the north end. No disrespect to the south end, Stacy. Just want to remind them, happy birthday, Keith. 50, that's a landmark.
You want it to go.
50 more. Chamber Mixroom, 18th, 5:30 PM, Heritage Park, and then I just echo what Commissioner White said, I'm glad that we hopefully clarified some of that on the public comments and concerns on the public. I won't go back there again, but I'm glad we got that. Pray for the Fieldpot family.
Yeah.
Y'all pray for me, sitting here in the middle.
He did a fine job. He did better than I did the first time.
I don't know. And then, you know, just as Commissioner Hale said, you know, we're in the Christmas spirit, but let's remember the reason for the season. If you don't know Jesus Christ is your Lord and Savior, I'd encourage you to seek that out.
You know, Heritage Park, it was really nice, I went last year, it was real nice and good for the kids. Had a lot of things going on out there, and a lot of people did show up. I did enjoy the last show on out there too. Really, really nice.
Yes, sir. Commissioner White, I'm gonna have to end it with, go NOE's, and all I need is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I've been waiting a long time to do that.
I got a motion, and a motion by Commissioner White, second by Mr. Perkins, all in favor of I, all opposed, same sign.[1795.75]